We have to put it out there sometime. And I've been thinking it might be best just to re-order these almost immediately with the whole meeting in context, but how do you guys feel about that? It's clear that we're not going to finish this this evening.
Right.
And that the information is incomplete. So the reading information and the information is incomplete.
That's important for us. Come back and say anything.
We have 10 and 12 minutes before the hearing starts. So do we have any good business?
We need to just acknowledge first of all that we have an audio recording device in one video and other recording devices. Okay. I just want to acknowledge that we have had scribe for some months and we're still searching. So I want to acknowledge dedication that Lynn has put into commentating this. I think she and I appreciate it.
Do we have 10 and 12 minutes? We have 10 and 12 minutes. Pardon, pardon. And we can't legally start the hearing except for the [inaudible 00:01:35]. That's why we continue it too. So we'll just sit here if we don't have anything else. We could get another 10 minutes. You have what you have got.
I have two copies.
I have a copy.
I have not.
Mike, share. No, go ahead. I'm order thinking.
12. Who's taking?
10 questions.
About the sound, but in terms of against all the criteria that was used to recover the studies. I forgot to mention that the [inaudible 00:01:39]. That's something that needs to be [inaudible 00:01:45]. When it's [inaudible 00:01:49]. Or when it's [inaudible 00:01:52]. Yeah. I think I [inaudible 00:01:59]. Although you [inaudible 00:02:00]. [inaudible 00:02:03]. [inaudible 00:02:06]. [inaudible 00:02:10]. [inaudible 00:02:14]. [inaudible 00:02:18]. [inaudible 00:02:22]. [inaudible 00:02:26]. [inaudible 00:02:30]. [inaudible 00:02:34]. [inaudible 00:02:38]. [inaudible 00:02:42]. [inaudible 00:02:46]. [inaudible 00:02:50]. [inaudible 00:02:54]. [inaudible 00:03:00]. [inaudible 00:03:04]. [inaudible 00:03:08]. [inaudible 00:03:12]. [inaudible 00:03:16]. [inaudible 00:03:20]. [inaudible 00:03:24]. [inaudible 00:03:28]. [inaudible 00:03:32]. [inaudible 00:03:36]. [inaudible 00:03:40]. [inaudible 00:03:44]. [inaudible 00:03:48]. [inaudible 00:03:52]. [inaudible 00:03:56]. [inaudible 00:04:00]. [inaudible 00:04:04]. [inaudible 00:04:08]. [inaudible 00:04:12]. [inaudible 00:04:16]. [inaudible 00:04:20]. [inaudible 00:04:24]. [inaudible 00:04:28]. [inaudible 00:04:32]. [inaudible 00:04:36]. [inaudible 00:04:40]. [inaudible 00:04:44]. [inaudible 00:04:48]. [inaudible 00:04:52]. [inaudible 00:04:56]. Please parse some more letters. [inaudible 00:05:00]. [inaudible 00:05:04]. [inaudible 00:05:08]. [inaudible 00:05:12]. [inaudible 00:05:16]. [inaudible 00:05:20]. [inaudible 00:05:24]. Here we are. Okay. [inaudible 00:05:29]. [inaudible 00:05:33]. [inaudible 00:05:37]. [inaudible 00:05:41]. [inaudible 00:05:45]. [inaudible 00:05:49]. [inaudible 00:05:53]. [inaudible 00:06:00]. [inaudible 00:06:04]. [inaudible 00:06:08]. [inaudible 00:06:12]. [inaudible 00:06:16]. [inaudible 00:06:20]. [inaudible 00:06:24]. [inaudible 00:06:28]. [inaudible 00:06:32]. [inaudible 00:06:36]. [inaudible 00:06:40]. [inaudible 00:06:44]. [inaudible 00:06:48]. [inaudible 00:06:52]. [inaudible 00:07:00]. [inaudible 00:07:04]. [inaudible 00:07:08]. [inaudible 00:07:12]. [inaudible 00:07:16]. [inaudible 00:07:20]. [inaudible 00:07:24]. [inaudible 00:07:28]. [inaudible 00:07:32]. [inaudible 00:07:36]. [inaudible 00:07:40]. [inaudible 00:07:44]. [inaudible 00:07:48]. [inaudible 00:07:52]. [inaudible 00:08:00]. [inaudible 00:08:04]. [inaudible 00:08:08]. [inaudible 00:08:12]. [inaudible 00:08:16]. [inaudible 00:08:20]. [inaudible 00:08:24]. [inaudible 00:08:28]. [inaudible 00:08:32]. [inaudible 00:08:36]. [inaudible 00:08:40]. [inaudible 00:08:44]. [inaudible 00:08:48]. [inaudible 00:08:52]. [inaudible 00:08:56]. [inaudible 00:09:00]. [inaudible 00:09:04]. [inaudible 00:09:08]. [inaudible 00:09:12]. [inaudible 00:09:16]. [inaudible 00:09:20]. [inaudible 00:09:24]. [inaudible 00:09:28]. [inaudible 00:09:32]. [inaudible 00:09:36]. Does anybody have any edits on the minutes?
Yeah, I mean...
Okay.
Actually, I think an attachment of a [inaudible 00:10:06]. Is that correct?
It should go with the minutes.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
It should be attached to it.
[inaudible 00:10:14].
Lauren, Lauren in the next one.
Yeah, under the department's [inaudible 00:10:18]. I just wanted to clarify a little bit around my comments. So I was gonna wear the first place where I am [inaudible 00:10:22]. And questions giving a height variance of 150 feet. And I responded that the bylaw laws for variance in height, if it means fewer towers. I can pass down to you, I wrote, I typed it out.
So you want to... Go ahead.
So just to make clear what the response was to that she asked about the variance question. And so I responded that the variance was for to trade off between height and fewer towers. And then the next comment, it's the point I don't think was really about the drop calls on the road, but that Ann was referring to a letter about modeling maps being at a level of [inaudible 00:10:28]. And her information about levels of in-car or outside use being different. So I can pass down to you what I typed in. And then on the last page, my recollection to clarify some of the question marks was that Michael suggested that the setback be for the school be defined as public school. And that we might want to also be historic district parks to give options in public meeting to get feedback. So that's just...
Okay, you want to add a few sentences. I remember all that stuff.
My question, I can't remember if I asked it. Would the minutes of September 3rd amended with amendments in Westbury United Avenue?
Yeah.
Yes, on both counts?
Yeah.
So you want, you might, you want that at the top of the [inaudible 00:11:02]. They're removed for approval and accepted as amended and voted on. So just since they're removed for approval, so [inaudible 00:11:18]. They were accepted, act is or as amended.
Okay.
And then you want to put in there that whether or not it's [inaudible 00:11:22]. You voted for it, you voted against it. But you're saying they were, they were amended, she said.
Well, I guess just [inaudible 00:11:28].
Yeah, that's correct, you're amended. And then it's [inaudible 00:11:30].
Mm-hmm.
In the first big paragraph, the first paragraph, I think it would be more accurate if the sentence says that I do not expect coverage of maps to be 100% accurate since we are dealing with radio waves rather than since we are dealing with electricity.
[inaudible 00:11:38].
Well, then I said it wrong because I don't mean to say that maps are not accurate.
Okay.
And I did go on and on about electrical and full waves and they're related, so you're right. But I wasn't talking about electricity, I was talking about radio waves.
Okay.
They said electricity is more specific.
Ken Kippen, I think it's just one P, right?
Right.
Is Ken here?
Yes.
You're one P.
Exactly.
Your last name, right?
Yeah.
Couldn't afford the other one? I moved to accept the September 7th, 2014 minutes as amended.
Hold on a second. All those in favor?
No.
Close. Hearing done. Sir, accepted. As amended. It is now 7:30, so we are in motion over the hearing.
[inaudible 00:12:00].
All those in favor?
Aye.
This hearing is called the order. It's continued from a date a few months ago, advertised last summer, it was July. And we're continuing with the application for the cell tower 1450 Spruce Corner Road. We've gotten a number of correspondence over the last few months while the hearing's been resting. I want to read that into the minutes in the near future. We have invited a person to testify. After that, we have some questions for the applicant. And after that, we want to open this up to general comment. I think it would start with the applicant. I'd like to ask if you report on the process, the NEMA process, and where you think that's at right now.
Good evening, board. My name is Kevin Lane from Industrial Tower and Wireless. I believe I submitted to everyone on the board last Friday a copy of the NEMA filing, but it was such a popular thing, the record. That was the section, the section 106 process for the historic portion of the NEMA filing. And really, there's a two-point part of that application. And it's a direct effect and visual effects of the proposed tower. With regard to direct effects, it found that there were no historic properties in area of potential effects, which they refer to as the APE for direct effects. And so how that was figured is an intensive archaeological survey was done at the site. And that's within the area of the compound, the 80 by 80 compound, as well as the access driveway through the site. And there were no cultural resources identified during that date. And then there was a visual effects test done, which was done by balloon tests. And there was also a no-effect finding on that. And that's basically on the historic properties within the vicinity of the APE. Now, according to the nationwide program agreement, the APE for cell towers under 200 feet is a half a mile. So a half a mile radius around the tower site is the area that you look for historic properties. We hired, the company we hired to do these studies is PAL, Public Archaeological Laboratory in Rhode Island. And they identified three part properties within the APE. And basically, they look at any properties that are over 50 years old. So if there's anything over 50 years old, they do an inventory of it and decide if it is eligible for a national register listing or not. And they also obviously look to see if there are any properties within that APE that are on the national register. There were no properties at all that were eligible or on the national register within that APE, so that's why there's a no-effect finding with regard to the section 106 process. Do you have any answer any questions with regard to the filing?
Yeah. I noticed a letter in the stuff that I got, an email had gone out to the Ashville Historic Commission. Have you heard back from them?
There's no response.
Okay. You know, there's, they went through and they found all the listed historic properties. Do you know what happens if another historic property shows up in the next month or so?
Wouldn't be historic if it showed up in the next month as well because it wasn't there when they did the survey.
So far as your concern, that's it, that counts?
Yes.
What if the Historic Commission of Ashfield found a property they missed, what would happen then?
We would take it into account and take a look at it.
Could you describe the archaeological survey that you talked about?
Sure. It's again done by Public Archaeological Laboratory in Rhode Island. And what they do is, it's actually on the file that I just gave, is attachment number nine, where they describe too much file that they're doing. Read it to me if you'd like. Want me to read it?
Yeah. Please, or explain it in layman's terms, if you will. Your choice.
I'm having trouble hearing over this corner if you would pick up a little more.
So they do a walkover survey. A survey. The walkover survey was conducted to examine the existing physical conditions of this project area to access the integrity, excuse me, to assess the integrity of the ground surface to collect data about the current environmental setting and to look for any surface indications of archaeological sites. A combination of variable affecting archaeological sensitivity, excuse me. A combination of variables affecting archaeological sensitivity, such as evidence of prior ground disturbance or the presence of favorable environmental attributes, was noted. The project area is located in the rural part of Ashfield, southwest of the Spruce Corner Village, and passes through wooded areas made up of hemlock, birch, maple, and pine, with large boulders at the, just under the ground surface, as well as open archaeological fields. The terrain is rugged with elevations ranging from 13 to 1450 feet above sea level. Soils in the project area are classified as alignment extremely rocky loam with a 3 to 25% slope. These soils are formed in sloping to steep uplands and surface stones and boulders are common. No wetlands were located within the area of the facility. The only one major freshwater body is present within the entire town of Ashville. Subsurface testing, so this is what they actually do. A total of 26 50 by 50 centimeter test pits were excavated within the APE for direct effects. The testing was completed within the proposed fence compound with one 9-pit testing block, block one, as a map within the [inaudible 00:11:22]. And along with three linear transits with test pits of 10-meter intervals within the proposed access utility easement. Intervals increased to 20 meters in several locations where ground disturbance was documented. Soil profiles were relatively dissimilar along the proposed access utility easement within the open agricultural fields. Disturbed soils were reported in many of the test pits likely due to construction-related activities for existing utility lines. The disturbed soil profiles are characterized by a thin A puddle and cloud zone horizon of olive brown fine to medium sandy silt, light olive brown fine to medium sandy silt, and dark olive brown medium sandy silt. Filmed layers ranging from 17 cm to 78 cm VPSs, at times overlying a remnant dark yellow brown silky fine sand, and light olive brown silky fine sand, B sub soils, and light olive brown silky fine sand, rocky brown C sub soils. The undisturbed soil profiles are characterized by a thin A puddle and cloud zone horizon of olive brown fine to medium sandy silt, to approximately 24 cm below surface, brown surface, overlying dark yellow brown and light olive brown silky fine sand with rocks and gravel C sub soils, to approximately 56 CMVS. And light olive brown silky fine with rocks and gravel C sub soils, to approximately 66 CMVS. Soil profiles for the wooded area that make up the...
Kevin, I don't think any... Raise your hand if you want to listen to every soil type.
I don't want to read it, you ask me.
Skip working soil types and figure the next part, and just feel like you'll sit your breaths up.
The combined results of the research review that the intensive archaeological survey did not identify any archaeological deposits within the proposed ITW Ashfield Cell Tower APE for direct effects. The proposed project is unlikely to affect any cultural resources, and no further archaeological investigations are recommended.
So what's missing from your NEMA that you say it's not ready yet?
We're just waiting for the state's final sign off.
Just the state?
That's it.
Got all your Indian tribes?
Yep.
Okay. Nothing else we're gonna expect other than what the state's gonna tell us. Do they annotate when they sign off ever? The state, when they sign off on NEMA study, do you know?
Do they give additional?
The gist, point of question is, is there more information coming or is the state gonna approve the...
Typically, they just said that they agree with the findings as a consultant or not. And why?
When do you anticipate it starting off?
Probably next week.
Next week?
Probably.
Yes, Lauren, go ahead.
If I looked at the map of the area of potential effect in the half-mile, it looks like to me that the old schoolhouse that has been raised as a concern is almost on the line, like touching maybe.
It's outside of it.
Touching on the outside of it. And it seems the intent of such a study would be to protect visual impact at historic sites. It would seem, I would like to know, how a professional organization would view the impact on that schoolhouse as it's both a concern to the neighborhood, to our town as a whole, and I think is in the intent of what is supposed to happen.
I can only tell you that it's a federal program agreement. They came up with a half a mile radius, and that's what we look at, everything we can do. We don't need to look at anything outside of it, because the federal government decided.
So it probably was some sort of compromise. It seemed like that whole agreement was about the compromise between trying to protect historic and trying to...
They just needed to come up with a standard because before it was all on the board on what they were looking at.
I saw the request that they...
So Lauren, that's a request on your part?
Yeah.
So if our Historic Commission was to say, hey, what about the schoolhouse? We really want to know about that, what would the fence say? Would they say, get lost Historic Commission, or would they say, oh, sure, we should probably look at it?
We'd have to see what they would say. Because the question would be asked of...
Is anybody here from the Historic Commission? Molly.
Molly, that means Barrett Road.
Do you have any information that bears on this?
I don't, and I don't recall ever getting any application before us on this. Remember, we got one over for...
It was a letter addressed to Richard.
Steve.
Or Steve, rather, sorry.
Steve, and Steve's not here, so it has not come before a public meeting of the Historical Commission. Can you tell me when it was sent to?
September 3rd, I believe is the date of the law.
When was the last time you met?
The 18th.
Yes, I have the September 18th.
Well, it didn't come before us at that time.
Okay. Well, we should probably look into it. Any further questions for the applicant this evening from the board? Okay. I'm gonna read out loud for a while of correspondence that's been sent to us. I'm gonna do this roughly in chronological order, I hope. First is from Ann Maddox. This was presented at a planning board meeting, not at a hearing. And you still want us to keep part of the hearing?
Will you clarify those questions? I was really concerned about the variance, if it was the chapter 40 variance or not, and I think you clarified that. So the first section of the letter isn't...
If you want, you can write a new letter that's more accurate, and I don't have to read this out loud.
I have one tonight for you too, so...
Okay. So this one is...
Yes.
...the final. So then I probably don't need to read the answers to your letter either from other people. All right.
Still have a question, trying to understand part of that discourse. I don't know whether we want to do that after the letters.
Okay. And I think that's an important question, it probably stands on its own, wouldn't you say?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we can do that later. All right. Sharon Wells. This letter is being forwarded in anticipation of the October 1st public hearing regarding the special permit application for the construction of an unmanned telecommunications facility at 1450 Spruce Corner Road in Ashfield, MAP 13, Lot 34, submitted by Industrial Tower and Wireless LLC. Unfortunately, my professional schedule will not permit me to attend the meeting person. However, I hope that you will consider the following concerns and opinions as you continue to evaluate proposed application. Primary, I am concerned about the potential impact of monopoles, comma, high lattice, or other industrial-like telecommunications structures on the town's rural atmosphere and character and the general physical characteristics of our neighborhoods. While I, one, do not object to adding or improving telecommunication service throughout town, two, believe that emergency coverage is essential for the safety of our people, and, three, fundamentally sympathize with the members of this community who wish to have reliable and broad service coverage, I respectfully request that the planning board continue to remain loyal to the fundamental tenets of our town bylaws by ensuring that any final approved structure is complemented... Unfortunately, my professional schedule will not permit me to attend the meeting person. However, I hope that you will consider the following concerns and opinions as you continue to evaluate proposed application. Primaryly, I am concerned about the potential impact of monopoles, comma, high lattice, or other industrial-like telecommunications structures on the town's rural atmosphere and character and the general physical characteristics of our neighborhoods. While I, one, do not object to adding or improving telecommunications service throughout town, two, believe that emergency coverage is essential for the safety of our people, and three, fundamentally sympathize with the members of this community who wish to have reliable and broad service coverage. I respectfully request that the planning board continue to remain loyal to the fundamental tenants of our town bylaws by ensuring that any final approved structure is complementary to the unique beauty and historical significance of our rural landscape, both for this application and for other applications that are approved in the future. Comma, see barn-like structure presented at prior hearing, or perenn rather. While balloons were floated earlier, early June timeframe in the application process, they were flown under the coverage of tree foliage and the visual impact has yet to be tested once the leaves on trees surrounding the proposed site have dropped. In addition, there are no current markups of what the structure will actually look like when complete. How can we therefore make a meaningful assessment at this time as to what the impact will be on the nature of our neighborhood and other parts of the community? I fear that in a haste to bring enhanced telecommunications coverage to our community, a number of unintended consequences will result, including but not limited to diminished property values, changes in the nature and character of historically sensitive neighborhoods and landmarks, increased industrial commercial traffic, and road maintenance costs on rural dirt accessways and potential future industrialization of our community in an unintended or haphazard way. Section seven A of our bylaws pertaining special permits mandates at the process ensure that any proposed use, structure, or development is consistent with the purpose and intent of these bylaws. This expressly includes protecting the town's rural atmosphere and character and conserving the physical characteristics of our neighborhoods. I am hopeful that the planning board will take seriously its fiduciary responsibility to maintain the rural character of our town for the benefit of current and future generations of Asheville residents. This means not allowing the economic feasibility of structural alternatives as defined by the landowners, tower companies, and the cellular providers to be considered as part of the final decision process. I am also hopeful that the planning board will place a burden of proposing acceptable facilities, solutions on the tower company by requiring that multiple delivery and structural alternatives be provided for review and that the tower company prove in detail how the proposed structure will be consistent with the character of our rural landscape. I think she needs a comment in there. This includes but is not limited to the use of concealment and stealth camouflage to align the appearance of facilities for the aesthetics, character, and appearance of the neighborhoods in which they are located. I feel fear that opportunities for a better plan may be left on the table simply because we did not push the company to propose alternatives that respect the aforementioned foundation of our bylaws. Further, as you know, the nineteen ninety-six telecommunications act does not prohibit denial of a facility based on the appearance of a facility which would change or negatively and unnecessarily impact the nature and character of a community, and there are a number of communities where applications have been denied based upon this reason with sufficient support and documentation. Further, the general feasibility of the project has not yet been fully vetted. Industrial Tower and Wireless have submitted an application without the benefit of a signed contract with the carrier, and there appears to be an absence of a meaningful analysis and verification of need. While coverage maps have been compiled, the coverage appears to be geographical in nature and information regarding the number of households to be served by the proposed tower at any height has not yet been clearly defined. In theory, a tower could cover several hundreds to thousands of acres without touching a single household, resulting in coverage of passive areas that result in ineffective or inefficient coverage at the cost of our landscape and the visual and historic character of our neighborhoods. As this issue remains, the project at this point is speculative at best and teeters on end. If we build it, they will come approach that belies a strong rationale for approval that could ultimately result in a severe negative impact on the landscape without defying benefit to the greater population of our town. Clearly, reasonableness should prevail, but Industrial Tower's economic hurdles should not preclude us from forcing the company to define the net benefit from a use perspective and commit to a physical infrastructure that we can live with well into the future. Plainly speaking, it sends us to require anything less of tower applicants in order to prevent a legacy of industrial structures on our rural horizons that we will come to regret in the near and distant future. I sincerely thank you for your consideration of these concerns, suggestions, and opinions. I believe there's always a way. We are thoughtful and creative and look to you to remain relevant stewards of our beautiful and historic landscapes, neighborhoods, hillsides, and vistas as allowed by law. Respectfully submitted, Sharon Wells. Now, unlike somebody testifying just here in a hearing, they send in a letter and it's a little unfair saying you're wrong there, or on the other hand, they have to sort of ask the applicants to comment on this. But Sharon's not here to argue back with them or hear their comments on it. And I just wanted to point that out that there's a little quirk to this letter thing, but I do have to read the letters in. I'm also going to suggest that we're going to send this to the applicants perhaps later on if they want to comment on any of these letters. Second letter. From Richard Todd. I rate as a former planning board member and as one of the authors of the telecommunications bylaw. What follows are some observations on the current proposal before the board for an installation at Spruce Corner. The single most important provision of the bylaw, the one that was subject to the most deliberation as we drafted it, is the height restriction at eighty feet. If Richard was here, I would, for instance, say, yes, we debated about that a lot, didn't we, Richard? Because we ended up with two height restrictions, the eighty-foot one and then the fact that we could vary it if they proved that a taller tower will cover a lot more ground. In a sense, the planning board never actually agreed and neither did town meeting. We have this kind of flexible thing written into our bylaws now. The application before you seeks an increase in the allowable height of almost a hundred percent to a hundred and fifteen. Although the bylaw grants the right to vary required conditions, variance this great seems to me to amount to a rewriting of the bylaw. More warmer, the precedent established would essentially grant the board complete discretion in future applications. Plausible arguments have been made for the necessity of the increased height of this and other such towers. It is quite possible that the bylaw is outdated, but if so, then surely the remedy is not to disregard it, but to amend it. If I were currently on the board, I would not think that I had the authority to endorse a radical change that is proposed. A change in the height restriction affects other parts of the bylaw, notably the setback requirement of a hundred and twenty-five percent of the height of the tower. While this ratio would serve its minimal purpose of protecting abutters in the event of a fallen tower, it would not sufficiently mitigate the visual effect of a large tower looming over their heads. At a recent hearing, Amit was invited as to possible negative impact on the neighborhood, but it is hard to imagine that a hundred and fifty-foot tower could have anything but negative impact. Indeed, I doubt that a tower of the size proposed belongs in any location that could reasonably be called a neighborhood. As a town that is blessed with large remaining tracts of open land, although I personally hate to see this open space violated in any way, if large towers are to be wished upon us, then I think they belong only at a substantial distance from existing homes. It seems reasonable that we should do everything we can to minimize the visual impact generally and that we must all pay the price of their presence rather than asking a few citizens to bear that burden disproportionately. I suggest that the right course of action for the board is to deny the current application and to undertake a revision of the telecommunications bylaw. The current board operates with much greater knowledge of the technology and the needs of the community than was available to those who wrote the original bylaw. I urge you to take advantage of that knowledge and create a comprehensive solution to the problem. That's from Richard Todd. This letter from Jack Barry, thirteen fifty-five Spruce Corner Road. Is Jack here this evening? This letter is written to the Asheville Planning Board, the Asheville Select Board, and any other individual or decision-making group reviewing the proposed cell tower at Spruce Corner Road in Asheville. You should know that this letter is being written from the house nearest the proposed site from which you receive a letter on that subject. We are certainly the nearest who will voice any opposition. The general feelings I have observed around here are, A, mild approval. Everyone, including the owner of the proposed site, already has cell plane coverage. B, standard indifference, and C, opposition tinged with fear. If you have not heard more of this opposition, it's because many people here are afraid to say what they think. This is Asheville, I don't... There's a lot of people here that aren't afraid to say what they think. I don't know how widely this is, but there are actually people in this town who would feel that their families and property and businesses would be safer if they didn't get involved. As I find myself questioning the need of a hundred and fifty-foot cell tower, or for that matter, an electric power plant in this essentially residential neighborhood, I feel the weight of that same fear of reprisal, but realize that the shame of keeping silent is even worse than my fear of speaking. As for the situation itself, we know that it has been deemed every American's right to have access to the great communication network contained in that little box known as the cellphone and that this area of Spruce Corner Road and one sixteen has been identified as a blank space on that network. We know that the hill above Roberts Brothers Lumber Mill has been proposed as a site from which to fill that space, a spot which anyone who's been up there can see would serve the purpose admirably. So what's the big deal? Although there are quite valid questions about the effects of such power transmission on human health, we have been informed repeatedly that the health of any person living near such a tower doesn't matter at all, so conveniently has no legal weight. And so we must reach down the legal yellow pad, wondering what the effect of such a tower and all that accompanies will be on the character of this rural area. Repeating the fact that people here actually do have cellphone coverage and questioning the need for a tower twice the height originally agreed on for towers in this area. And then there's the more personal detail that such a tower invariably decreases the value of the nearby properties, including our own little one-point-seven-acre kingdom, all we have in the world, which would virtually guarantee that we'd be stuck here cheek to jowl with that very thing that made us stuck. But all this is merely legal sand tossed in our eyes. What's really going on here is a growing conflict of interest. Spruce Corner Road is a quiet place. During the last few years, new people have moved in. We have several families now with young children, and there are gardens and chickens here, sheep and horses. The place has a rustic agricultural atmosphere, which is why we've all chosen to be here. It's simply not a place for an industrial park. Those of us who question the tower don't oppose any individual personally. All we want is some insurance that this lovely and vital environment won't be sacrificed in the name of one version of progress. After all, we live here too. Sincerely, Jack Barry, thirteen fifty-five Spruce Corner Road. No, I asked. Rochelle Wildfall here. Dear Asheville Planning Board, I would like to address the issue that proposed cell tower be erected on Spruce Corner Road along with proposed constructions of other towers over a hundred feet in nearby neighborhoods and express my desire for the town of Asheville to get a bit more serious about how these things are to be built. Many people are concerned with the impacts they may have on the character of our rural neighborhoods. I am proposing that the planning board and select board set a precedent for a long-range plan around the construction of cellphone towers. My concerns lie with ninety-nine-year contracts. Considering the changing technology and distinct possibility that these towers could remain in line of sight ever their use has been declared defunct, heights of towers, as well as towers with lights, as they have been proven to be a beacon resulting in many deaths of migratory birds. Just for the record, though I own a cellphone, I do not depend on it for my communication. That said, I am not opposing the tower. What I am asking is that ramifications be considered and researched diligently. Cheryl Jordan here. Dear Board Members, I'm a late-long resident of Asheville-Spruce Corner area. I am in one-hundred percent support of promoting cell tower coverage in my area and in other areas of town. Although I currently have only a landline, many senior citizens such as myself may come to need a cellphone because they are living alone and may be better able to remain at home longer with continuous cellphone coverage. This may be for personal safety reasons as well as for communication in case of mechanical issues within their home or when they are traveling to and from their home in areas that are sparsely populated. There has been some concern about overlapping coverage of cellphones, but since cellphones use different frequencies as do radios and other users of airwaves, I fail to see how this could cause a problem with cellphone use. If anything, it may cause some of the current coverage gaps to be filled in and provide better coverage overall for cellphone users in Asheville. When the town approved the wireless tower that incorporated the use of a historic landmark town hall steeple, it promoted a private business and allowed a private citizen to create a revenue stream based on the use of town property. While the wireless tower height is not nearly that of the cell tower proposed, the position of the tower in the middle of the town, attached to the town hall steeple, visible to all passersby, makes the visual impact of the wireless tower much stronger. The requirements laid out for the wireless tower project should be equivalent to those required for the proposed cell tower. Any appearance of favoritism where one person is allowed to establish a new business on town property and another is not allowed to protect an established business on their own property should be discouraged at all costs. Patricia and Seymour Itzhoff?
Itzhoff.
Itzhoff? Not here, right? We agree with petitioners that a master plan for telecommunications should be instituted to ensure... That all concerns are evaluated equally. This applies to Spruce Corner cell tower application. And then we also received a petition from voters. We, the underside registered voters of Asheville, do hereby petition the planning board to recognize our petition and take it into consideration. We, the people of Asheville, Massachusetts, are opposed to locating an industrial cell tower in scenic residential agricultural and historic neighborhood of Spruce Corner. Proposed cell tower is not consistent with the character of our community. We request that the planning board deny the special permit because it does not meet the standards set forth in our local zoning bylaw and pursue development of telecommunications master plan for our town. And I'm not going to read all the signatures, but this is a public document and available to anyone from town clerk. Yes, Helen?
I submitted the petition and I just wanted to say in public that there's seventy-three voters on...
Oh, thank you, I missed that part. Very good. Now, I have a short comment. There's a lot of requests to deny and to grant in here, and I can't remember us ever granting a special permit without conditions. And we're not, I don't think we're, anybody up here is talking about a hundred and fifty-foot cell tower anymore. We're talking about what are the conditions under which we would allow a cell tower. And that's pretty normal in special permits. So a request to deny is no... So a request to deny is no cell tower, or it's not the cell tower that we've been looking at in the application. And it can be read both ways, so I'll clarify that as we go forward. So Thor, planning board is also, with that in mind, we're looking for conditions, because we've got a lot of testimony here about how this affects the neighborhood character. In fact, that's predominant in my mind legally valid testimony that we've had. And it has to do with the height, it has to do with ridge line. There's a lot of great unusually good things in terms of the bylaw about this particular application, in that it doesn't cut a new road through the woods. It reduces removal of mature trees compared to what a lot of other sites are doing, is located away from wetlands. But the neighborhood character impact is undoubtedly there. And so the planning board has invited Thor from Environmental Integration to testify about what he has as some options to deal with that issue.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Thor Holbeck. I'm the CEO of Environmental Integration. I'm from Orange, Massachusetts, just around the corner. I'm going to show a few slides. All right, Environmental Integration has been concealing cellular applications for 15 years, primarily in the U.S. and Canada. And we've come up with a design, and I'm going to show you different pictures of options that we have, low-density, high-density, different heights of the tower. Quickly, the history of it, it started back in the 90s down at New Jersey Turnpike, where a few structures were put up by a company that came out of that zoo and environmental animal habitat industry, or things. And they knew how to create trees. And I was one of the first to start doing this business back then, working with several other companies. And back then, it looked like a boughbrush. Some people called it franken pine. It was just not, we just didn't quite get it how to do this. Today, we come up with a design and a product that really works. So I'll take you through it. This is a model, a computer aided model. It's two-scale, it's a 150-foot tower. I'm showing you this. This happened to be AT&amp;T. They like to be on top of the tower, Verizon and AT&amp;T Fight-a-Lot. You can see the antennas, that's how antennas look like for a cell tower. And there's a lot of equipment inside of it, RRUs and different to send the signals down below. Now, when we conceal it, these are different kinds of branches. As you can see, we tuck it in as close to the pole as we can, and the branches will be somewhat in front of it to kind of conceal it. And let me show you this. There's a 150-foot tower, two-scale. That's how it would look to your naked eye. And there's a photo simulation, put it into perspective view. It's 90 feet worth of, the elevation is 60, 60 feet is where the branches stop. So it's very important to understand and know how low on the pole you need to keep the foliage, to keep the branches, so you won't have a bare part of the tower sticking out. There's another tower that happened to be 100-foot. This is up in Canada, in a park, up there, provincial park. And that is a lower tower, so you get a more tapered look to it. That is just standing by itself. As you can see, when you're standing back, visually you cannot see the antennas, they blend right in. We also paint them to fit in with the foliage that's surrounding it. We do pay attention to what's in the areas around. We take pictures and making sure that the structures, you can see it in the middle there, the structures fit with the surrounding trees. If it's further north, the density is less. If it's further south, the density is higher. So we try to kind of mimic that the best we can. Now, there's limitations of what you can do, obviously, because you have to meet certain laws and certain wind loads. So you have to pay attention to that. That's one, same tower looking from below, and this one had a bark cladding on it. We actually could bark around it. You can see it kind of looks pretty close to the rest of the natural trees there. This is a place where, this happened to be at Aronnax Park, where there were hiking trails right next to it, and we really tried to create something that will not be obstructed through the eye as we walked by. This is back up in Canada, and again, we pay attention to the trees that's close to it, to kind of have the same shape, and look to it. This is what we call bark cladding. It's a fiberglass material or an epoxy material that you glue onto the tower itself. And you hope that a lumberjack won't see it and cut it down, but it looks pretty natural. Here is a low-density up north in Aronnax Park, in a winter scene, and even then it can blend in pretty well. And if you look at the little picture down below, this where the horizon, it's cutting, it's above the horizon line, so if you, this happened to be 90 feet, but if you put in 150 and it crosses the horizon line, you need to really pay attention to conceal it well, because it's going to stick up higher than the rest of the trees. And that's a concern. In this case, it works. This is up in California, it's 110-foot redwood. Same thing with bark, it's in a parking lot, a governmental installation. You can also create different kinds of trees, different species, if you will. What we've come up with here in the Northeast is assimilated white pine, if you will, and that seems to blend in the best. It's a creative white pine. The idea is not to camouflage it, the idea is to conceal it, so you don't really pay attention to it. You might see it, but you don't know what it looks, you just kind of, it's not supposed to stick out, it's supposed to blend in. Just quickly, the product has 150 mile per hour wind load, which is far better than any competition, and it's going to be installed a lot down in Florida where it's a lot of hurricanes. And there's just a warranty, 10-year warranty on the product, which is also nice. And that's it, what I have.
Thor, we have a question from the floor.
Okay, I'll stand over here.
I just, my name is Ken Kipman, I live at Spruce Corner. I just wonder if anyone in the room has ever seen one of these disguised, so to speak, disguised cell towers and not known exactly what they were looking at?
I have. There's one right here close by.
Where?
109 in Comington. What they call Swift River?
Yeah.
There's one sits right there.
I know, I've seen it. It sticks up.
It sticks up some, yes, but it still looks like those.
Yeah, but it doesn't, it's not concealed because it's way above the level of the surrounding trees.
But it is one of those towers.
Yeah. Anybody else?
I've seen a lot of them in my travels around the United States.
Have you seen any that have fooled you?
He said they're not trying to fool you, they're just trying to make it fit into the landscape, and it does. You don't notice it.
Well, the thing is, you probably haven't seen one, that's the whole idea. You've seen the competition.
Anyone else want to speak to that topic?
Kevin. Are you chairing the meeting now?
No, I'm sure. I just wanted to hear any other opinion.
Sure there will be. Yeah, true.
I think the image is to soften the image and not to obliterate of heaven, the something that is totally incompatible with the ridge line that you're looking at. I would rather see a tall camouflage tree tower than a pole with all this metal sticking out. I think softening the image is the idea.
And the sun would get nearly reflected off the metal, I suppose, which helps to have that green
The paint is a non-reflective paint, so you will not reflect any from the sun. It blends right in.
Will it fade ultimately?
It's like any paint. Yes, it will, eventually, but it can be retained.
Thor, do you have any examples that you've done that are beyond the 10-year period?
Yes.
You have some there, and how have they held up?
Well, the branches themselves are made out of polyester resin and fiberglass, and it's like a sailboat or canoe. It's made the same way, basically, and they will hold up for a long time. After 12 years, I have a few towers up to 12, 15 years, and they're fine. What wears out is the bristles that needs to be replaced after roughly 10 to 15 years. It wears out with the snow and the rain and the wind.
Do animals tend to inhabit?
Birds do, yes, very much. It's not what we like to see happen, but they do. Because they might interfere with the signals.
You have a name, right? Please identify yourself, name, you're nice, so we can remember who said that. Yes, Bill, and then there's somebody in the back.
No problem, it's a bourbon draw. Is there any attenuation on the signal due to the material you have up there?
No, it's transferring the signals just fine. Very little is any deflection of the signal. That's why we use FRP, we call it Fiber Revolution Ester, because it transmits the signals very well, like wood, wood, stone, so we use plastics.
There, was a hand on the way back?
Yeah. Arthur Lybman, from Clearo. Are there any lights on this thing at night, or, I just don't know if there's any lighting involved with these towers.
Got a question for the applicant. Any lights on this, do?
No.
No, no light.
Yes, Anne.
Anne Maddox, Plainfield Road. You know, I could see how this could integrate well if the height of the tower, so the tree line's about 70 feet, is I think what the applicant has said. So I could see, you know, a white pine typically being 20, 30 feet above the tree line, but I'm wondering, I'm afraid we're going to have something just as ridiculous if we're talking 60, 70 feet above the ridge line, whether it's a, you know, if it's this tree. And I understand the concept about softening the edge, but, so that's just my comment and my thought. And with the lifespan of this, you're saying about 15 years, it starts to break down. What would the term of the life of this tower be? And would the applicant be responsible for refurbishing this artificial camouflage every 15 years, or, you know, would that be written into your permit in your contract?
They have to flow the bond for demolition and for taking it down. And I believe that we can, well, John, you can input on this too, but I believe that they want to take care of their property if they're making money on it, and they're going to go paint it. And they're going to paint it as they were instructed. And at some point, if they were to nastily not redo their camouflage, and the special permit said that it has to be camouflage, at some point they would get an order from the building commissioner saying fix your camouflage and do your paint. And I think that translates into an abandonment after a year or two if they keep ignoring it. But there is enforcement at the speed of law mechanism built into these kinds of things. So I think I answered most of your questions, I'm a little unsure about that replacement of camouflage later on. Yep?
One question for the applicant. How does the applicant feel about housing these camouflage branches and stuff? Is it something you love to do, or is it something you're grabbing at?
I agree with the comments that, Ken, sorry, I don't remember his last name, was mentioned, that they stand high above the trees around them, and you know it's not a tree, it's clear it's not a tree, it's a concealed tower. And in my opinion, people see towers, and once they're in the landscape, you don't notice them, just like telephone poles. When you make something look like what it's not, people will always look at that tree, at that fake tree, and think it's silly. And so we're against a mauling heart. Not saying we won't do it, but that's our opinion on it.
I would just like to respond to that, that my comment to that is respectfully, it's about scale. So for me, it's not equivalent to a telephone pole. For the many cases, telephone pole is below the top of the tree line. And in this case, whether it's camouflage or not, it's sticking well above the tree line.
In some cases, they're next to fields and there's no trees around them, that's eleven.
Which makes them more visible, I might
I'm talking about telephone poles.
Well, again, it's about scale. Just a comment, response to your
You're right, Kevin, the scale of telephone poles a lot more distracting field than it is in the forest. And I agreed with you when you first said that about a few months ago, about the tinsel trees and the picture you sent us of camouflage. I don't blame you for not wanting to build those. On the other hand, we've since discovered that in orange masks they're making camouflage that's much more effective than what they were making 10 or 15 years ago, at least that we were aware of.
And a lot of those examples, the heights were 97 feet, 90 feet, 80 feet, 110 feet.
But nonetheless, some of them are sticking 20 or 30 feet above the tree line, or more. And some of them even appeared to be maybe double the tree line, of the photos shown.
I have one other comment I just want to make, that if you decide to put a condition on approval, if that's what you decided to do, that I hope you're not considering making us buy our materials through this company to employ you tonight, because we would definitely have a serious problem with that.
How so?
It's just like if we wanted to put a car dealership in town, and you told us we had to use Toyota, and we wanted to put a Chevy dealership in there. You really have no right to tell us which company to use to do this. Plenty of companies have their competition, and we jump around, we don't want to be tied down to one particular company. And it's the same with our towers, we don't always rely on a particular company.
I certainly understand what you're saying, but the thing that I've seen in other ordinances who have heard about in other ordinances is that there's a certain quality that needs to be required, and that seems to be legitimate, be it from this company or from any other company, it just, it has to be a certain way.
And that's fine, I don't, I don't have a problem with you responding how it needs to be done.
No, I think it would be an or equal specification.
Yeah.
Certainly, I wouldn't
Yeah, we would, I would
I hate it when people say, no, you can only use the white tile from this manufacturer, you can't tell the difference about, because it costs twice as much. But it might very well be an or equal, and I suspect there aren't a lot of products that are equal among the range of what you can buy.
Just a quick comment from there.
Yes.
The whole idea is to really get a taper to the tower, so it looks natural, and unfortunately, there is no other companies that make long enough branches to create that tape, just to come. And so you need to build, we build up to 17 feet wide on either side. And so you need to build, we build up to 17 feet wide on either side, so you can, on the 50 footer, even 100 footer, you need to have that taper to make it look nice. Most of what you see out there are bottom brushes, straight. And though I agree with you, stand out when you look at it, you might as well not do the job. So I think it's important to know what the design will look like, and that's why I provided a computer aided drafting, which is exactly what we will build. Most other companies would produce nice photo simulations that looks fine on paper, but they can't reproduce it in real life, because they don't have the technology. That is my personal opinion.
Okay, anyone else? Yes?
Molly Debbie, I just wanted to point out the obvious, which is that the visual impact depends entirely on the angle from which it's viewed. And that bottle brush on Route 2 by Shuttley Mass is really, really prominent from the road. Less so if you go up into the neighborhood. It just depends entirely on angle, and I think it would be important to see what the visual points are from which people would be seeing it in the Spruce Corner.
Yeah, we know the visual points, because we've all driven out there and looked for them. But yeah, you're right, it's going to be from a few directions. Anyone else? For Thor. Well, Thor, it looks like you've done your presentation, and thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to see something else.
Ruth says any comments on camouflage?
Well, I have two comments for the record. The first one is, I don't believe the NECA study can be approved without the local historical commission's input. Unless things have changed in the last year, the historical commission for the town has to weigh in on this, so it's not valid.
All right.
And number two, for the record, I put in my email to the board that I recommended a 120-foot camouflage tower. I think that's.
You're right, I meant to read that in, but it was, most of that was a response to a letter that the writer didn't want to, so he didn't get around to it.
Right. After hearing all the testimony and everything, I feel that that's a good compromise.
So how many carriers do you think they can put on a 120-foot tower and have them be economically viable or electrically viable to do well?
Well, I think that you could probably put three carriers on that tower, and I think that's probably what you're going to see out there, is three carriers.
So Kevin, what's your opinion on that? I know you wrote back 130, is 120?
Yeah, I feel like with a 120-foot tower, you're going to be limited, most likely two carriers. And I said 130 because we're talking three carriers.
Kevin.
Which three carriers are you talking?
AT&amp;T, Verizon, Sprint.
There's a lot of people requesting proof that you actually have a tenant. I feel sorry for you to put all this money into it, you built it, and then had to take it down on a bond in two years. So I've been assuming that you probably are pretty sure about your tenants. How do you feel about furnishing us some proof that you have tenants, or that you might have tenants, since there's such a document even?
We've already addressed that, and we said that we don't currently have a contract with the carrier. They typically wait till we get the approvals and start building. This was the case in Holly, and we have two carriers on that tower now, so.
So.
But there's no requirement.
I had to repeat myself a few times.
I know. I have to.
Is Sprint anywhere in the area? How close is it?
Yeah, they cover Route 9.
Route 9?
Yeah.
Do you know whether they cover Route 9 on a tower, or whether they're using roaming?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Or using roaming? Because it looked to me online that they're showing that it's roaming by using someone else's.
It could be. It's most likely a combination of both.
Yes, there's a hand way in the back.
Hi, this is Peter Wood. I live in Spruce Corner. Obviously, I'm a historic carrier. My house was built in 1820, so certainly, maintaining a historic kind of farm is a concern of mine. Also, since I moved into the house in 2010, I had 18 feet. And through the winter, I try to get my internet at our house. Cell phone service has never been a problem, so I don't really see why this is so necessary. Obviously, that's just one carrier, but cell phone service is consistent and good in the Spruce Corner neighborhood. And my biggest concern is, I bought this house for life, and I don't want to see my property values go down. So that's a big concern, living in an industrial area and, you know, seeing the area turn industrial.
Didn't you guys figure out the cell phone call?
I'd like to know.
I'm going to testify for the record. I drove from Sanderson out to Cummington Road and then down Spruce Corner Road a couple miles. And there was approximately a mile there where my cell phone works, and I was unable to make calls on the rest of it. So please put that in the notes, I was just testifying.
Who's your carrier?
AT&amp;T. Yes?
Henry Kaminsky, we live at 1179 Spruce Corner. We have an internet business. Our only internet connection is AT&amp;T. We run thriving business off the AT&amp;T signal at 1179 Spruce Corner Road. And I have a $359 bill to show them.
No, that's all right. The unfortunate thing is courts have thrown out testimony from people in hearings saying, well, we all have coverage, we all have coverage, we all have coverage. It goes to court, I've seen court cases where the engineer's map's in.
They call it anecdotal, but.
And I can't find the signals on the road that you guys are talking about. I got curious enough, I spent an hour looking for it, and it wasn't there. I mean, it passed John Ford Road out by Cummington Road, I didn't make a phone call. And that's the only area that, on the main roads, and then going north through Watson, I couldn't make a phone call. Every 10 seconds, approximately, I tested it. And that agrees with the engineer's maps, so I don't know what to say.
Yeah, we have a, this is a $50 cell phone, every month. Nothing fancy.
Yes, in the back, if you'd like. Yes?
Mike, you're fine. I live in Spruce Corner. I live on Plainfield Road, just past John Ford Road. I've lived in town my whole life. There is very spotty coverage out there. In a moving vehicle, forget it. Maybe stationary at your house with boosters and what other other technology you're using, you may have it. I pick it up when the weather's perfect and the trees are perfect and the leaves are gone. I go to the bottom of my driveway, I don't have it. I know where you live, you have the service. I pick it up if I park in your driveway, I go 10 feet either side of your driveway, I have no service. It's spotty at best.
Just a minute, there was a hand over.
Judy, I'll ban, I live on 152, me and John Ford Road, and I have perfect service. So, I have AT&amp;T.
Well, I'm a little unclear about my neighborhood. Oh, Joseph Kaminsky, Spruce Corner Road, 1179. I'm just a little unclear, because is the purpose of the planning board to determine whether or not this is good for one person and then therefore not bad for others? Or is it for the whole town of Asheville? Or is it for people who are driving past? I mean, because we do live there and we do have service, yes, we get in a car and drive frequently, don't always have service. I have friends with Verizon phones who come to my house and get signals. We have signaled pretty consistently, always consistently. So I'm wondering if your purpose is to determine what's good for our neighborhood and what's good for the town, because, I mean, if you're talking about an 80-foot tower, which is what you're talking about, and Spruce Corner is about 200 feet lower than Sanderson Academy, so that signal is not going to go into Asheville at 80 feet. So I'm just curious, I'm really unclear about your whole agenda as to your planning. Is it for one person to be able to have this business, or is it for the whole town to have cell service?
Well, our purpose is to, this is a very complicated question, actually. The purpose of the federal law that we're sort of suffering under here is that everybody anywhere should be able to get a radio signal if somebody wants to send it to them. And by extension, if somebody wants to put up a cell tower in a place that doesn't have complete or adequate coverage, they therefore have a right to put up a cell tower, or really any radio transmitter, as long as they obey the federal laws. Asheville, as well as most of the towns in western Mass, when this law became formalized in Washington, went through and tried to figure out what we could do to protect our neighborhoods and to protect our town from just cell towers wherever they want to put them. So to the extent that we're allowed by state and federal law, we've subjected this to a special permit process we're in. First of all, we talk about the coverage to find out whether, because if there's perfect coverage already, I mean, if the engineering map that shows what they're going to have after they put the tower up was presented to us as the current situation, we could, under our zoning laws, say, no, you can't put that tower up, because it's already covered, you're fine, unless four carriers wanted to be there and they only could fit three, and then we'd have to allow them to put another carrier up. So it's really for the whole town to have as few towers as possible.
As few towers?
That's our purpose here, despite the fact that the feds want us to have as many as private sector wants to put up.
I get zero coverage in almost every other part of Asheville. I get the best coverage that I have, it's Spruce Corner. So it seems redundant to have it in Spruce Corner.
Well, I could say that March Road has better coverage than you in my neighborhood, because I can make a clearer phone call than I can anywhere near your house, in my opinion.
I drive home, and I have a couple of signals.
But it's still inadequate at March Road, according to the standards of the engineers and federal government. So we're not in a position where we can say, you have fine coverage now, just away, applicant, because there's plenty of cell service. That's clear to, I think, to everybody on the floor, right? And what we are trying to do is limit the impact of cell service and cell towers on the town in general. It's not just your neighborhood, your neighborhood got lucky, or unlucky, depending on your point of view, in that you have the second application.
Does that mean you are running out of your line?
No, we're officially, we're waiting for them to finish their homework.
So I'm confused.
And I think we're also waiting for the historic commission.
I'm confused, because it's a big name, you said 80 feet, and then you started at the top, 120. So.
The application is for 150.
So why did you say 80?
I earlier said that 80 is the, in the bylaw. And why are you asking me something that I remember explaining to you before? It would be another question. The 80 is in the bylaw.
Why are you rude?
Go over 80 feet, then it's a, then they have to prove that they need to go over 80 feet in order to get the coverage that they need in order to cover everywhere. The coverage maps at 80 feet, which our public documents don't really reach to the other coverages that are surrounding there. I'm pretty sure I said this to you before.
Me personally?
Last summer.
No, no.
No? Okay.
As you said.
I know, I'm sorry, I'm losing track of how many times I've recited this. Sorry if I appear rude for a minute. Yes, Molly.
Right, I'm glad to hear you talk about this in the context of getting the fewest number of towers to adequately serve the town. And I apologize if this has come up in few of these hearings that I haven't been at, but.
No, that's all right.
Has the planning board looked at optimal distribution points? You have a master plan that would say, here's the best kinds of, the best places in Asheville for towers that would adequately cover the town with the minimal number of towers?
We don't have a plan, as planners would call it. We've never been funded for something like that as part of our master plan kind of thing. We have kind of forced the applicants to give us coverage maps all over town of likely areas to get an idea of where we're going to see other applications meet, and that's all public information.
So it depends primarily on the initiative of people who are building these towers and the initiative of individuals who are willing to put it up.
Yes, this is all also wrapped up in private property, in that essentially, if you own land in Asheville and you can fit the criteria of our bylaws, you would like to put up a tower if there isn't, what the engineers would call inadequate coverage in your neighborhood. The reality is probably some of the best sites are owned by people who don't want to put up towers, and some of them seem to be owned by people who maybe want to put up towers. There is a possible application behind the Robertson firm in South Asheville that's being reviewed by, you've seen it, the historic commission. They haven't submitted an application to us yet. Parts of Ridge Hill seem to have an awful lot of coverage. Further out Baptist Corner, there's a few spots. Perhaps on Bird Hill, there's a great place. Behind Elmer's on top of the hill has a lot of coverage. Some of this Ridge Hill and behind Elmer's would almost overlap the coverage that is this cell tower is doing. And the one in South Asheville would leave a gap, if I remember correctly, between this one. Does anybody remember the South Asheville one? Let me ask you guys. It covered part of Main Street, right? We've got it all the time now.
Robertson, what do you call it?
I think the Robertson site would cover part of Main Street and a lot of South Asheville. I'm not sure about that. We did, the applicants have been very helpful with helping the planning board understand the big puzzle. They want us to ignore the 80-foot that they're sort of almost allowed by right and go up to where they can have a useful height of towers, and have been very helpful in proving to us that we should allow them to do that, because if they make it taller, it would appear that we might not have to build another tower, say, on Buck Hill or Highway 112 or something like that, than if they were to build it at 80 feet. Yes?
Mike, I think it's important that people understand that each cell tower by itself is almost useless. What cellphone coverage is, is a system of towers, where coverage is overlapped, towers can see and talk to each other. There's an awful lot behind this, and so if one doesn't understand all of the rationale for the placing of one single tower, you really have to take a look at where it fits into a plan and a network of towers, because that's how the cell system works. As you travel, your signal gets picked up, your signal transfers from one tower to another, and to do that, the coverage has to overlap. So you really have to step back and take a look at the larger picture of covering the town or covering Route 116 or 112, and to look at that rationale rather than the specifics only of that single site. only of that single site.
Well, I think you have to look at both, though.
Right, but...
Because a single-site owner has rights.
No, I understand that, if there is a context of the system, that it's going to be ignored.
Ellen?
Well, I wanted to make a comment from the response to, I think it was Pierre, about property values. And I wanted to get some response from the board, and maybe from the consultant and the applicants. I've been hearing a lot about the impact of property values, and yet, I think you could argue, and I respect that, but I think you could argue also, perhaps, that in this day of a connected economy, and self-use, and access to internet, you could argue that your property values would go down if you don't have that access. So I'm just one, I'd just like to get some feedback on that, on what people think about that. Because I think it's valid to be concerned about property values, but I think you can argue, you could argue it differently. I just thought...
I'd like to comment on that, Coach Ellen.
Please.
We don't have any criteria for property values in our, to protect property values directly in our bylaws. The reason we don't have it is that the attorneys have told us to not do that. There's a long history of property value protections in zoning law being used to exclude low-income people. There's a long history of it being used as essentially Jim Crow laws. And there's a lot of evidence that property value surveys are incredibly easy to slant. In other words, would your property value go up or down if you had cell service? Would your property value go up or down if you had a view of a cell tower out of your living room? You get much different answers depending on how you ask those questions. And attorneys consider property value protection as a poison pill for the town to take or not to take. What they recommend is that we protect the things that actually create property values in the first place. That is to say neighborhood character, mature trees, cut down on how many extra rows we put through the woods, preserve open space. All of these, those things actually create property values. Laws saying that property values can't change, historically, aren't very effective at doing what they say they're going to do. They get misused for people to have personality conflicts, and they get thrown out by judges. Protecting all these other things, which have been in our bylaws for a long time, we have a wonderful town partially because our bylaws have been working for us, protecting these things that make our property value, is, in the view of a lot of planners, much more effective than just trying to protect property values. Yes, Walter?
The one thing to add to that list is views that you didn't mention. It directly affects taxes, views.
Yes, views can make properties go up, and they can make it more expensive to live there as a result. Property values is a double-edged sword. Everybody protects their property values. I think it was White Plains, New York, none of the servants could afford to live in town anymore. You have to be careful about directly going through money that way with this kind of thing. Yes, anyone else? Yes?
Tony Gilson, Spruce Corner Road. Some of the context of the property value notions is, we have no broadband, that affects property values. If we get this cell tower, I think that would adversely affect our property values. I live next to a 200-acre plot of land that was Cole's property, that was just logged, and we're talking a lot of major, big trees that are now gone. That whole hillside, gone. We're facing a biomass plant. It just feels like that neighborhood is, is under siege. And, you know, where, where does it, where's the silver lining in all this? I have a phone, I have a landline, I'm happy with it. When the power goes out, often, that phone is still working, so I don't plan on getting rid of that. So that's part of the context that we live in, in that neighborhood.
Thank you. Yes?
Hi, Cindy Carney, 347 Main Street. I work in a place where a lot of people who are driving through, a lot of people who are visiting, and tourists come. And since the last big cellphone tower hearing, I have very deliberately asked people who were trying to make a cellphone call, what they thought about not being able to do that. And they just, you know, they said, "Well, where can I go?" And I gave them several options in town to go and make their phone calls. The responses I got back range from "How archaic is this town?", to "How delightful is this town?", "I'm going to have a real vacation now?", "Oh, thank God, my kids can't get ahold of me", you know, a whole variety of things. But I must say that the overall response to not having cellphone constantly and everywhere was very positive. People were relieved that they would not have to deal with this 24 hours a day, like they do in their real life, they said. The other thing that I need, I wanted to say was, there is an American author, authoress by the name of Ellen Hunt, who came to Ashfield in the 1800s multiple times. She published books, and she wrote articles for newspapers and magazines about the beautiful rolling hills of Ashfield, and how absolutely gorgeous the land was, and what a treasure the land of Ashfield was to everyone's sight that came here. And it just seems like we need to remember some, from the 1800s on, and I'm sure even before then, people admired our landscape, and thought it was gorgeous and beautiful. And I want to, I just want to say that I want to caution people before we take that away from ourselves and from all the people who come here because of our landscape.
Yes?
Are you accepting comments on the, what was submitted for the NEPA study? Or, I know it's not complete, so...
I don't know. I mean, the reality is, you can, you're all welcome to put in comments anytime you want to.
Sure.
You want to wait for it to be completed?
No, that's fine. I just wanted to point out...
The risk.
Okay, thank you. There were, there were three properties, well, definitely two properties within the delineate APA that are in MACRIS, which is the Mass Cultural Resources Inventory System. The applicant's consultant identified three properties within, within the zone. They left out two properties, one being the Spruce Corner Bridge, which was, in fact, considered for National Registered Designation at one time, prior to its being rebuilt in 2007. That property was left out of their study. It is not recognized at all in their report. And I think that's a really significant omission, because when you, when you're on that bridge, you have the most spectacular views north and south of the Swift River, and of the whole valley, and it's, it's a very significant landmark in, in our neighborhood, and it was left out of the study, number one. The other property is the, what's known as the, well, in the inventory, it's the William Howe's House, commonly known as the Old Streeter Farm. That property is also in the AP, and was left out of the study. There's no mention as to why that decision was made, why it was omitted. But again, that is also another significant historic landmark in, in Ashfield. It's an incredibly beautiful property. It's owned by the Wildermoose now, and they've been investing a considerable amount of time and money in, in restoring that property, and in having a small farm there. It's quite beautiful. And then the third property that I would agree with Lauren, really should be in the, in the inventory, is the Spruce Corner Schoolhouse, which, which, if you look at the maps, and I can provide you with map, I made a map identifying these properties, and what was included, what was omitted. You know, they use a topo map to delineate it, and the red line for their APA, AP goes, it's right on the back of that dot. So what does that mean? It's one foot away from the building, two, and, you know, that brings to question, where was, where is the, the center of the radius for the APA? Is it in the middle of this, you know, 80-foot zone, that's the, that's the concrete pad for the tower? You know, so if you move that zone over 10 feet, the schoolhouse would be in it. I, you know, so I don't really know why that was omitted, and it's certainly a very significant landmark in Spruce Corner, and it's still very relevant to our community today. I mean, I was just at a community meeting there a couple weeks ago, and so it's a, I think it's another significant omission. And then there is a fourth property that was omitted, that I will acknowledge is outside of the AP. It's actually my property, and it is just across the street, so it is about 25 feet outside of this zone. So I think, my question is, how do these properties get included in the study? They, they are directly omitted, and how do we, this, this finding by this consultant that there's no visual impact on any of the properties within this zone is just ridiculous. It's just absolutely ridiculous. And what is, what is, what is the process for accomplishing all that? Do I call Mass Historical tomorrow and let them know, you know, about this? Or, or, and if, 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 and who decides that this, this, there is no, no visual impact finding? Who makes that final determination? Because they say they're just waiting for the state's sign-off, so, you know, who, who makes that determination? Do you, the board, then say, "Wait a minute, no, we don't agree, there is a visual impact"? How, how's that determined? What's the next steps there?
Kevin, could you answer the question of how the half-mile is measured?
Sure. The half-mile is measured at the location of the tower. So the coordinates provided for the tower is where that half-mile radius comes from, which is in the center.
So it's from the center of the tower, and not from the edge of the tower?
Well, it's from the tower, yes, the towers.
From the center of the tower, or the edge of the tower?
The tower's four feet wide, so it's from the center of the tower.
Okay.
Four feet, you're not making a difference.
Do you know anything about these properties that were perhaps left out?
I can give you a map if you'd like to be further.
The radius, the radius, every property that's considered a historic property, or the potential for a historic property, within that half-mile radius was included. She mentioned the bridge, which is just outside of the AP, but was also replaced recently, so there's no historic value of the bridge that's brand-new, or less than 10 years old. It's not historic. The other properties are all outside of the AP, and that's a federal standard that we need to follow, and that's what we did.
Okay. Yes, Lauren?
Looking at the photographs provided that seem to reflect the no visual impact, particularly from the cemetery, when it's labeled as looking at the site, there's definitely a deciduous tree right there. So how is it decided, one, where the photographer stands? Because I kind of wonder if they stepped two feet this way, if that would so be true? And what do we do about the fact that we don't know when the leaves are off, what that's going to look like?
It wasn't just vegetation that was mentioned, it's also terrain and topography that are between the sites. So even if the leaves are off the trees from that cemetery, I don't think you're going to see that tower. But these people who conduct these studies, it's not based on what I'm saying. These people are licensed archaeologists and professional historians, so, in my opinion, it's meaningless when it comes to this. It's theirs, and they have their resume attached to this survey. So, you know, opinions from other people is really hearsay. It's what the professionals say, and that's what we rely on, and that's what we request of the board in mind.
Also, Ann, I'm concerned that the historic commission hasn't weighed in and become part of this. And I feel like they probably don't.
I do have one comment before you go to that, too.
And I think they're more qualified than us on some of this. And on the other hand, federal law says it's a half-mile, it's a half-mile and 12 feet. That's probably a fact that just stands on its own.
Sure, and that's, but I can give you the map. The bridge is within the AP, and so is the Wildermoose House, the Streeter Farm.
If you call the state, they may know what you're talking about.
And I can give you the MACRIS inventories, too, and they have maps as well.
How did you age your record?
Kevin is speaking, and raise your hand if you want to talk.
I just wanted to clarify one thing. It was mentioned that we need approval from the historic commission to go forward, and I just wanted to state that that is not true. We don't need a written approval from the historic commission. They can put their opinions in writing and submit it to the consultant and to the state, and then the state would make that final decision.
But it would be a reasonable, prudent action for the board to wait until such time as our own historic commission has answered your letter, I think.
If they decide to.
Right, unless they say we don't want to. I, I put one, not voting on this until I hear what they have to say. Yes?
Joanne Ostrosky.
Yes, Joanne.
I read in the newspaper, and I assumed that we would be hearing about the flora and fauna of the area, that somebody checked out some professionals? Endangered species, et cetera?
Conservation Commission has signed off on this. I don't know. Have you guys done anything with all that stuff?
Yeah, I have a letter from the Division of Fish and Wildlife, this was submitted before, but I have another copy that just basically says that there's no record of endangered species in the city of Parkland, if that's not incorrect.
Oh, yeah, I know about it. Yeah, so I guess if there are endangered species there, they haven't come in yet. Yes?
Yeah, Doug Field, Biggerwood, South Ashfield. I want to ask the gentleman, if the tower goes up, can you put emergency antennas on that tower?
Absolutely. We may not have that here for the first meeting, but we've mentioned that we would provide space to public safety for the town of Ashville, free of charge, so they have to...
Why have I said that is, once the fire department crowns a hill by Walt Newprince, we lose radio contact with our dispatch center, completely. The only way we can get anything right at this moment, I know that it's being worked on, but at this moment, we can pull into Howard Streeter's do yard and use a cellphone. That's the only place we can do that. But we cannot use our emergency radios on our fire trucks or the ambulance in Spruce Corner, and it is scary. The closest tower that we have in Spruce Corner is Borden Mountain, and that's in Savoy State Forest. And like tonight, the way this weather is, we can't reach it. We're going to Spruce Corner tonight, completely dead. We cannot meet anybody, and that is why we will try to have a vehicle sitting up by Lenny Gould's, so they can communicate back and forth. It's very scary when we go that way right now. That's why I asked you if we could get an antenna on that tower.
Yeah, and the answer is yes, we would provide you space on the tower to put you in there, free of charge. We typically offer that, depending on if we go south.
My question is, I have a question.
Okay, Emily.
I was just curious, when you said, "I know there's work in progress", we've heard some conversation about communications with the police through something in Plainfield. Is that something that... Is that something that also?
That is working on, but it also has been working on for quite a few years.
But if that's what you were referring to?
Yes, it is working on it, but we don't know when it's going to happen.
Okay.
Bruce, do you know anything about the emergency service in Plainfield?
How do I ever?
How much of this area is that going to cover for that?
Should I refer this to Bill?
Almost all. The work has actually started in the shelter. Some preliminary work of electrical wiring has been put in. We're applying for the license for the frequencies to use that location right now. And as soon as the licenses come through, we will be able to install the equipment and start testing it, which could take a couple of weeks, I guess. We need somebody to climb the tower and mount the antennas and get the equipment in there. The money has been allocated, the equipment is available, and we're primarily waiting for the license, and that should be not far off. I know it's been applied to.
Right. The fellow that's doing the licensing has actually been out of the country for a couple of weeks, and we don't know where that stands at this point, but Bill is right through the goodness of Northeast Utilities and the Mass State Police. We've been able to secure a space in that building in the Plainfield site, and that's going to be an additional site to the, for COG, emergency communication system.
Well, that'd be great when it happens, but we've been waiting three or four years for that.
Well, I can assure you it will be, it will happen long before this tower is up.
Bill, keep your hand up.
My question's been answered, thank you.
Okay, and Senator?
Janet Rogers, Graves Road. I just want to speak to the emergency issue. I was picked up in the middle of the night, thought I was having a heart attack, and the radios were not working. We're trying to get that fixed, we don't know when, but the cell service in this town is terrible for emergency services, for people who are on the road who are stuck. We've got to step up. These people are trying really hard to make it very nice to look at, as best as they can, and my vote is for approval of this. When we get all the little i's dotted, the t's crossed, you know, they're not trying to make our town miserable or messed up. They're trying to work with everybody, and this is something that we need in the town of Asheville.
I'd like to speak also as, my name's Mike Dufrain, I'm the president of the Hilltown Snowmobile Club in Asheville. We maintain 60 miles of marked groomed trail in the town of Asheville and into Plainfield, and there are very, very few areas in our trail system where there is any cell service for emergencies, breakdowns, injuries. We've had cases where we've worked with the Asheville Fire Department desperately trying to find someone lost in the woods. It can be a pretty hairy situation when you can't make contact, and some simple coverage in this town would make a world of difference. We, you know, the snowmobile industry, the area that comes in in this town, a lot of people may not like it, a lot of people live and die by it. Neighbor's Store, the Asheville Lake House, Elmer's Store gets a lot of business in the winter from all the people that are coming into town and riding, and we make a point of putting a few signs up in town where there is coverage to try to let people know. There's, there's a short area on Peter Hill where we have a little bit of coverage, there's a short area in Spruce Corner out toward the John Ford Road where there's limited coverage, you know, but a broader coverage map is only going to help, as far as I'm concerned.
I think that we're, we seem to be getting near the, into the information, or new information, and it seems likely that we're going to continue this to another date certain because the NEMA study's not done, or we're going to close the hearing tonight, probably not. How does the board feel about that? You guys want to continue this hearing to a certain date because the NEMA study's not done?
I think so.
Yes.
I think it should continue.
Okay, that's a consensus. We really wanted somebody who could make a motion second, and we could all vote and put it in the minutes that way, it's probably a better idea. Move that we continue this to?
Yeah, move that we continue this hearing to a date you can determine.
Those in favor? Looking to the applicant, what's your suggestion for timeframe to continue the hearing until the NEMA is done?
I feel we should have a response within the next week or so. Do you meet every two weeks or once a month?
We meet every two weeks, but we are capable of having other days. I'm also thinking that we want to have the Historic Commission have an opportunity. Molly, when's your next two meetings, do you know?
It's the 4th of May, so the 23rd of October is our next meeting.
Okay.
I think October, that's, where is the second? I am.
So I would suggest that we want to continue it to at least a week after the next Historic Commission meeting. Does that make sense to you, Molly?
Yeah.
Which would make more time than you're asking.
I think you ought to write an official letter to the Historic Commission from the town of Asheville requesting that they provide input.
You're absolutely right.
So that it's on record.
Yep.
I'm going to be out of country until November. Was it October 29th, sounds okay?
Does October 29th sound okay? Are you still be here?
I'll be here.
What day of the week is that?
What is that, until next day?
Does that work for everybody else on the board? Yeah, I have to sign up for anything else on that study, because it skips myself.
I had asked Michael before the meeting as to what the schedule, what our timeframe are here, legal timeframe are, so I don't know if I can give to tell everybody that. It's after.
It's 90, 60 days or 90 days after the hearing closes. There's no limit on how long we can hear stuff, except that people run out of stuff to say after a while. I think October 29th is fine. We're probably going to write a decision to, you know, send to the courts or whatever, and we're probably going to edit that, and it's probably going to go on through a few meetings after the hearings closed. So before we actually make our decision, because I could just write it, and you guys might not like everything I say, or Allen could just write it, so we're going to have to get together and edit it and agree on what it is.
Kevin's asking about time, are we going to go into 7:00 prep and then 7:30 hearing start? It seems like a good format.
I think so.
I suggest that the board get here slightly earlier, 6:45, 6:30, in case we have a lot more copying.
Mm-hmm.
Is that any to a lot of?
No, I think so. We really didn't have that much to do before the hearing. We had to make sure we had all our papers and the little things.
Not to say that we wouldn't have more to do this night, but we can email that and discuss that.
Molly had her hand up a minute ago.
I just want to be sure that we get the materials to the Starbuck Commission, whether they've been, whether they're in the hands of the chair of the commission, I don't know, but I'd like to ask if either the planning board pulled those copies of all the maps?
That's this packet, right?
It was sent them, yes.
Yes.
The packet was?
Can I give you this packet as well, in case if you go through your mail? You can have it. I have my own, that's what he submitted, to give it back to us.
Can I just see the number of copies?
Anyone else have anything to add to the discussion? Yes?
I'm Helen Hodges, my question is, Spruce Corner, I'm still concerned about the health problem as far as the stray cellular, radio frequency that comes to near houses and people that have children, and be a registered nurse, I have to say that I am concerned about that. And I'd like to have that recognized.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
I just have some questions for Bruce.
Okay.
One is a carrier. Just from your experience, have other, what, have you had other situations where towns have to make a decision on the power if we've got a carrier?
Uh, yes, I've had one.
So rare, rare situation?
It's not rare, no. It's becoming more popular now that people like industrial wireless will build a tower. The carriers have really gotten out of the tower construction business. They seek these kind of folks. There's not only these folks, there's Crown Castle, SBA, there's a number of them out there, excuse me, that build towers and invite carriers to come, so that's becoming the norm now, where in the old days, the carrier used to build towers.
This is probably more so since the rule changed a few years ago, right?
With consolidation. Everybody wanted their own carrier, you could go sprint, say, you could be on their tower and so forth, but.
We build too many towers, and they've all got forest problems, so they don't unite.
Well, the other things is, say with the camouflage and whatnot, is, I'm not sure if this is a question that you go to an attorney or you, but to what, to what, where does it put our position in our decision as to the extent of costs and quality and things of that nature with regards to self-telling? I don't think that's a consideration you have to make. You've got to come up with a plan that the taxpayers and constituents of the town agree on, and you know, it's going to be a reasonable compromise between the town and, you know, the tower construction company. I don't think you can go and just put lots of rules on the tower company and say that you've got to do this, this, and this. I think that's unfair, but you've got to come to an agreeable situation, so in my letter, I said that I think a 120-foot tower camouflage is a reasonable compromise. Kevin seems to think 130 is the right compromise, so I mean, it's like bartering going back and forth, so, I mean, I, I think, you know, you've got to really consider the visual impact of this tower on the community, and in my opinion, I think camouflage might make it sweeter, so that's, that's my opinion. Somebody have a question?
Are you done, Kevin?
Yeah, so now I have to see if I can understand someone right again.
Tony has, and Morgan?
Could someone clarify, I'm not sure if I just heard that if we want to camouflage, the town would have to pay for it?
No.
Okay, hang on.
That would be on industrial wireless, that would be part of the agreement to give them the permit.
And what would be our recourse? I understand that they want to be able to shop around for that camouflaging, but what if they, they shop around and, you know, it doesn't look like the photos that we just saw there, like what is the recourse there? Like, is it just a done deal at that point, or?
Well, I think the board and industrial wireless would have to come up with a design that's agreeable, and that would be part of the package that the town would sign as a compromise with industrial.
Just a comment, the state of Connecticut, as part of the state law for self-towers, demands that the most up-to-date camouflage be used.
Right, period.
Period.
So Connecticut dealers are racing down most of the date, but, yeah, that, let's see, could you repeat your question, because there's a couple of questions mixed in there, I think. What would be our recourse if they don't build what?
Like, I understand that he, you know, he wants to be able to shop around so that he's going to, you know, get, get a good deal, but I just, you know, my concern would be that he finds, you know, someone to do the camouflaging, and the tower is put up, and it doesn't look like those pictures that we just saw over there.
Yes, pine tree, and designed for that space, it probably won't look exactly like any.
I understand that, but you know, that does look, that looks better than the franking trees that we, you know, I've seen in packs, but.
So I think that there's a written specification that reads something along the lines of for the, for X number of feet, the lower branches shall be longer than the next branches up, and longer than the next branches up, and that they won't be in straight lines, and they'll have a certain amount of variance. And to tell you the truth, I think I'm going to get Thor to help us write that, because he knows more about specifications of trees than most people I know, and I think he'd be happy to. But we will give you a specification that leads in that direction, but I don't even know, Thor's going to know exactly what it looks like until he puts it together, although he's going to autocad it from certain directions. I don't think he's going to give us 360 autocad drawings to confuse ourselves, if he's still, we'll, we'll know what it looks like from a few directions. Thor's going to do it in his own pocket. We might have to type for him, I'm not sure. But we're going to have to do an or equal kind of specification in order to get this kind of thing, and it'll just be part of our job.
And just a comment on the pole itself, because of the distance from anybody, it's not next to a trail, it's not next to anybody seeing it, the bark would not be part of the application.
Because from hundreds of feet away at the property line, you can't see the bark anyways, and that, that was also Thor's idea, that you wouldn't bother to waste the money to put bark on a tree that far inside of a property. He uses bark next to the road in the outer parts, when you drive 20 feet away from it kind of thing, but it is a pretty impressive bark. Any other questions, comments? Yes, Joanne, and Lynn?
It was said that there will not be a light on there, and is there any concern about aircraft?
No, there's a lit- regulation that under 200 feet, I think it is, you're going to need a warning light, and these things kind of show up on radar, I understand anyways. And, yes, have you handed it back?
I did, Nicole.
Nicole, yes.
Nicole from Spruce Corner. I was wondering if the planning board has considered?
I was wondering if the planning board has considered that this issue might be a little bit big for five people to make a decision, a decision that affects the whole town?
Oh, yeah.
So I'm wondering if you have considered that. What, can that be brought to a bigger forum? Because the petition that 70 people signed asked that they consider that a master plan be brought to the town. And, and so I don't know, you know, not very much attention has been placed on that 70 people were against the cell tower happening in Spruce Corner. The reason, one of the biggest reasons being that they felt that the town needed a master plan. And I'm wondering again if the five members of the planning board have a right to make a decision that affects the whole town.
Yeah, under state law, we don't certainly do, and any citizen in the town has the right to petition the select board to create a master plan for anything they want to create of course, and then the select board would recommend that petition to the planning board, planning board would research it, there's a whole process for moving down, whether it's telecommunications or any kind of master plan, but it's not in place here, and unless we keep this hearing open for a few years, it's likely to happen after this hearing, because it takes time to do these plans and, and money the town meeting has to vote for, because you're talking about hundreds of hours of, of work by people who are educated in the fields, and they're not going to work for free, and this is, it's usually a five-figure and 20, $30,000 to do plans. We are, as I've said before, we have been getting the applicants to give us as many of the maps as we can think of that would go towards a telecommunications plan, but no, under state law, we're the ones that are authorized to vote on this issue.
With the telecommunications companies basically putting up inquisition because of the one site that they have, that we have spent a lot of time making. And there's a lot of pressure there.
I mean, that's just them, the feds and the state government and emergency services and whatnot.
No, it's basically them, especially after hearing what's been commented tonight, I feel like there's a certain amount of holding as far as making the decision quickly, like the comment that I just heard, that he would like to have this done in two weeks, and I think you have allowed legally to have much more than two weeks, because Historic Commission has not had a chance to say anything.
Can I interrupt for a minute?
Yes.
He said he would have his homework done that we asked for a few months ago in two weeks. He didn't say that this would be done in two weeks.
No, I think he asked us to wrap this up in the next two weeks. Is that not true?
Well, even if he did, I don't care, I'm not going to do what he says. I'm going to do what's right for the town and what the board votes on.
I, I just really hope that you are going to do what's right for the town, and that this is just the beginning of something, the very beginning, and it's not, it's not going to stop once this starts.
I disagree, it is going to stop. Somewhere around three or four cell towers, they will have almost no power to make this add anymore in this town, that's my opinion, and it will stop them. I don't know where those three or four cell towers are, but once the maps look like the one that he's submitted, that this coverage is going to be, then they don't have power to ask, is that correct, John? Once we have coverage, we can more or less say, sorry, we have coverage there, this conflicts with the neighborhood character, it's going to make it worse, you're cutting down more trees, you're building roads in the wilderness for no reason. At that point, it's more like if somebody came to us for another kind of industrial permit other than a cell tower. There seems to be a confusion that cell towers are industrial, and that if you have a cell tower, you're going to have all this other industrial stuff, and in reality, they're very separated in law. Having a cell tower, according to the feds and according to planners, is a normal thing in a residential neighborhood. Having any other industrial use that I can think of off the top of my head is not a normal thing in a residential neighborhood. And that's, that's very clear to me, having read about this stuff the last 20 or 35 years or however long I've been thinking about it. And, and that's sort of answering the other people's industrial concerns. Consider that that field up there, Lenny's got his junk and his tower, is already the most industrialized spot in the entire neighborhood, where else are you going to put a tower out there, other than where Lenny's got his other tower put up? Are we going to cut a, a road up to some other hill and cut down a bunch of trees and mess up two hillsides?
I don't think anyone else would be able to have a cell tower put up in the neighborhood.
But we don't have a choice about it, really.
You don't? You don't have a choice about that?
No, we don't have a choice to say no to radio reception. We have a choice to say radio reception. And consider also the way I feel about this. If I'm, somebody driving down the road, and I just took First Aid, right, somebody's driving down the road in that section of town, they come across an auto accident, and they know CPR, and they know how to dial 911, and somebody's at their last extremity, and in First Aid, they told me to dial 911 before you do CPR, so I got to drive four miles to make a phone call while this person's dying before I can go back and give them CPR to get back to their dead. This is an emergency services perspective of the health benefits of cell coverage. And I, you're asking me to tell whoever's parents are of that person that died, and these kind of things happen every day somewhere in the world, that, I'm sorry, but our health concerns in our neighborhood and our neighborhood character have overbitten public safety to the point where this is the reality you're going to have to live with. So Nicole, we're going round and round on this, and I recognize that in half of what I said, I don't necessarily take all that seriously, I'm trying to tell you the way the other extreme thinks about this from where you're at. Do you understand what I'm saying? And I'm stuck trying to answer your concerns and their concerns and finding a middle ground, and I think everybody on the board has been elected and has volunteered to try to find that middle ground between one extreme concern and the other extreme concern, and that's as best we can do.
I think that you're doing a really good job, but I just want to know if this decision can be made by five people again, and I think I have to research the cause of why, that is a really big question.
Well, you might, you might want to talk to an attorney about that, you might want to go research the way state man use law is set up. It's a big, thick subject and takes a long time to get into it. Would you like to work for the planning board and take minutes as our scribe? We're looking for somebody to do better than to have a lot.
Please.
Please. Yes, Ken, would you like to volunteer to work for us as our scribe?
I'd like to make this a test in, Bill, that...
I'm Michael.
I'm sorry, Michael, sorry. That residents of Spruce Corner are concerned about the cell tower, and another aspect that's not been mentioned yet, and that is that it will provide revenue monthly for Mr. Roberts to be able to pursue his goal of erecting a biomass plant. I understand that this is not the subject of this hearing, but this is one of the fears of the group, that, of people that live in Spruce Corner, and I would like the board to just know that.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Tony?
We have a phone in our house, and we have never turned anyone away who has broken down, and it has happened many times, and we just gave some gasoline to some folks today so they could go on their way, probably faster than if they had called AAA and gotten them, to get them some gas.
All right, thank you. I think the information's getting less and less useful to us. If anybody can think of anything they have in for tonight, other than that, I would suggest we close the hearing and continue it until October 29th. Of course.
So the hearing is to continue, continue on 29th, and the secretary?
I guess.
October 29th.
Okay. Cancel anything else? You know, if this is a hearing, you can't vote.